Good evening. Welcome to the August 19th, 2025 meeting of the Board of Selectmen, Select Board. This meeting will be broadcast live and recorded on Foxborough Cable Access. We're immediately going to go into executive session by roll call vote. Doc, you want to start?
With the motion and why we have to.
Motion to enter to executive session for union negotiations and strategy discussion regarding contract for the Foxborough Police Department Local 379 M C O P A F L dash C I O.
Second. Mark, yes?
Stephanie, yes.
Bill, yes.
Amy, yes.
Debbie, yes.
Okay, we will be returning into our regular session probably slightly after seven o'clock or right, or seven o'clock or so. Okay, thank you. Okay, welcome back to the August 19th Board of Select Board meeting. We've just returned from executive session and we have our first item out of it, which is the alterations on, oh no, I'm sorry, citizens input?
Anyone here for citizens?
Katie, do we have anybody?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. We can go into the alteration on premises annual, all alcohol restaurant license for T P M International Inc. doing business as Lenovo Pickleball 340 Patriot Place.
Okay.
Good evening.
Do you have, can you read that?
Yeah, well, actually, this, at the request of the applicant, we will, this will require a continuance. So if we could have the motion be to move to our September 9th meeting at 7:05, please.
Motion to approve, motion to move the public hearing to September 9th, 2020.
Continue.
Continue. The public hearing to September 9th, 2025.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Are we still allowed to talk?
I'll wait till the next one.
You're seriously, you're all set?
We're the next, we're also the next item on the agenda. 3.01.
Gotcha. All right. One day beer and wine applications for T P M International Inc. doing business as Lenovo Pickleball at 340 Patriot Place.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Tom Miller from McDermott Quilting, Mill and Hanley, here on behalf of T P M International or 11-0. I'm joined by Jody and Bob, the team here from 11-0. We're here before you for these one day licenses to help address the timing issues we've had with getting A B C C approval through this. We withdrew the portion of the application for the outdoor courts, but those outdoor courts are open and are, they're able to operate those now. And in order to take advantage of what has become a really incredible end of the summer, Jody and Bob are looking to offer the amenity that they have been planning on to their players and their visitors during that time as we work through this process. As such, we've made these applications today. Nothing has changed from the, the plan we presented in June to the board on how the outdoor area will operate. It will just operate at this point in, under a different licensure until we can finalize everything and get everything in place for the permanent solution. So I won't take up any more of your time at this point and, you know, happy for you guys to answer, happy to answer any questions you guys have.
And just for the board's sake, from my understanding of this is that we have the right to do this under this premise versus what the A B C C is going to do. Once they finally approve it, then they'll come back to us and we'll give the regular license that they, so they won't have to have the one day permits to do.
Correct, yeah. There is no application for this space before the board at this point. So that allows the board to issue these one day licenses for this premise.
Is there a motion? Want to do the motion?
Motion to approve 31 day beer and wine license request for T P M International Incorporated doing business as 11-0 Pickleball at 340 Patriot Place from August 20th, 2025 to September 20th, 2025 with Robert J. Seraph as manager of record.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing done. Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Good luck.
Good luck.
Got to see you on the court soon.
I've been there and they're so busy, so busy.
Stephanie, thanks for coming to the event.
You're welcome.
Sorry, I was crazy that day.
Nope, no worries. In our, in our selectman's update, I'm going to give a little, little synopsis of Ian up there.
Thank you.
This is the payment.
Okay.
Thank you guys.
I'm taking my first pickleball lessons on September 4th. I'm going to join through my town recreation department. I don't want anybody to see me in Foxborough until I have, I know the basics.
I'm the user. I do well.
Now we're doing Craig.
Much better that way.
Introduction of the new conservation.
Come on up, Craig.
Sorry.
So I'm, would like to welcome Craig Wiley. He's our new conservation agent. He started just over a week ago and has been acclimating, been to one conservation commission meeting, I think on your first day. And, but why don't you tell the board a little bit about where you came from and what you're going to be doing?
So, hello everyone. I'm Craig, as you know, and I'm excited to be here. I come from a background of conservation land and reserve management and prior to that wetland restoration on the Cape. I grew up in Franklin, so close by, and I'm excited to be back home after many years in the south coast area.
Well, ask, where would you, where were you living most recently?
I was on Cutty Hunk Island, if you know it.
Population of 40?
Forty-ish, yeah. Depending on the time of year.
How did you like it there? I've been there.
Oh, it was great. Yeah. I had the last three summers out there and loved it, but I'm happy to be back in civilization.
Happy to have you. Obviously, we do have quite a bit of conservation land in town, so we're looking forward to having your activity. Help us manage that and grow it in a responsible way. So again, thanks for joining us.
Yeah, welcome.
Thank you.
You two are twins. Well, that was one of the, you know, with the, when Jane left and we saw sort of the impact of not having stewardship. I mean, if you remember, someone came in with a broken down sign. So I think Craig brings a really good sort of catalog of experience for that. So he'll be out in the field taking care of our open space that has been kind of a little bit neglected, shall we say, just due to personnel issues. He's also going to get that open space rec plan done that we've been waiting for. So he's got a lot on his plate, but I think he's the perfect person for this job.
Thank you.
That's great. Welcome.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Enjoy.
Good luck.
Thank you.
And he's already got a T-shirt. How cool is that? Foxborough, yeah.
Catherine took care of that. On the ball. Catherine's a planner.
Okay. A little ahead of schedule here. Norwood Hospital gathering during Norwood Day. Like to come up, guys? Please introduce yourself.
Good evening. I'm Doug Jassett from Norwood. I'm helping out Selectman Mike Sad from the Save Norwood Hospital Rally Committee. Our rally is September 6th at 11:00 a.m. on the Norwood Town Common, and you're all invited to attend. We'd like to thank you very much for your time. I see you have a full agenda tonight, so I'll be very brief. Our communities are in the midst of a medical crisis. Norwood Hospital was built in 1919, and for over 100 years, it served the needs of many surrounding towns, including patients from Foxborough, with tens of thousands of visits annually to its emergency room and 215 beds. That all stopped in June of 2020, when a severe storm hit Norwood, flooded the hospital beyond repair. Its owner at the time was Stewart Healthcare, which was the largest private hospital system in the country. Last year, Stewart filed for bankruptcy and abandoned finishing the construction. For over five years, our collective communities have had to deal with thousands of mutual aid calls, overcrowded regional hospitals, and emergency room delays. Nothing's more important than the health of our families, friends, and neighbors. So now, at least three major events need to happen. A hospital operator needs to be determined. Then, a determination of need needs to be issued by the Mass Department of Health. And then, possibly two years of construction to finish the job. Everyone is affected, so everyone needs to help Save Norwood Hospital. Many groups have already pledged to support our efforts. Police and fire departments, E M Ts, doctors, nurses, seniors, businesses, families, building trades men and women, and hopefully tonight, the good people of Foxborough. So in conclusion, many thanks to Paige and Katie and the board for letting us speak, and hopefully we'll see you all September 6th, 11:00 a.m. on the Norwood Town Common.
Hi, my name is Jim Gaverty. I'm from Norwood also. I've been a part of helping, trying to get Norwood Hospital going and stuff. Like just Doug said, the surrounding towns, the ambulance drivers, the fire department, they're going crazy helping out the other towns. It's all coming together. But people's lives do matter. They take them to Beth Israel over in Needham, and that hospital is packed solid. Then they're going to Beth Israel and Milton now, and over to the Good Samaritan over in Stoughton, Brockton area. All these hospitals are packed. We're coming all the way from Plainville to Norwood. We have Gillette Stadium up here where somebody always get hurt in a football game, they'd always take them to Norwood. That hospital is very important to the surrounding towns, and we ask everybody to try to show up and show support on that day. And I want to thank all of you for taking the time and listening to us. And I hope we can get something going to get that hospital up and running for the surrounding towns, which we do need.
And you may not be able to answer this, but I do have a question. You know, as far as, I think most people would agree, losing hospitals is a catastrophe in this day and age, just because there's just not enough to start with. But what is the likelihood of someone stepping up as an outside company to come in and take over Norwood Hospital? My understanding is this is a very expensive project to finish, and I guess I'm, I'm, not that I would deter from what you're doing and where you're going with this, and, and, you know, I would support it, you know, personally, but, you know, do you have any kind of feel as to where that might be at this point?
Sure. I don't know how you put a price on people's lives.
Yes.
But all of our seniors that are in senior centers and children that get burnt, burns, and, and family members that have heart attacks, where seconds matter, not hours, not minutes, but seconds matter. I just don't know how you put a price on that. Somehow, some way, people at the State House find ways to afford to build certain things for certain folks, and we all pay for it. The working families and the working people of the state pay for it, sometimes begrudgingly, but, but we do it, and we all step up to help out each other. And I think this is a, a regional crisis, and I think there are operators that are interested in operating that as a hospital, and the financing of which is three pay grades above my level. But there has to be a way through the insurance companies and federal grants and the state and their own fundraising. There are a lot of generous people in the world that step up and make contributions when it comes time for hospitals. There were a couple of wings that were on that hospital from local people, named after local people, who really have big hearts, and I, I would hope and pray that that happened again.
Do we, is there a dollar figure of what it would take to get that hospital, the hospital pot up and running? And then, so that's what it would take. Somebody, you could probably get someone to come in, yeah, and to take over the hospital, to run the hospital. So the problem here is getting the hospital back up and, back up and running. Is there, is there anyone throwing a dollar figure around?
So as of right now, the shell is completed.
Yep.
So it would be mostly the interior trades that would need to be finished, the plumbing, the electrical, the H V A C, et cetera. And I'm sure that the contractor that was there has, you know, subcontracting bids that were in effect at the time. Those would probably have to be put back out with, with the change in times. But the first, the first hurdle is, is getting one or two operators, and there are a couple at least that are interested, to step forward. And then, we've had a problem with the Mass Department of Health issuing a determination of need because the old determination of need was under Stewart, who is no longer the owner. So you can't reissue it to them. It would have to be a new applicant to get that issued to them. Hopefully, with a lot of elected officials and a lot of towns making phone calls, that the State House and the reps and the senators and the governor and everyone would listen because time is wasting. We're, we're beyond five years without a, a regional hospital now. And as I mentioned earlier, the mutual aid calls, just in the town of Norwood, this year so far, are over 600. So when you take an emergency vehicle, whether that be an ambulance or a police car or whatever it is, out of service, you have to call a surrounding town to help cover and pay for a couple thousand dollars or whatever it is each time. So collectively, we're looking at millions and millions of dollars that it's costing our communities.
If I had a chief, we've been, we've been listening to it since, since the storm. You know what, what the impact is. And I'm sure if, if we haven't all had, had it, have to make a 911 call, we probably know someone who has.
But I don't want to repeat myself, but at the risk of repeating myself, I'll just say, if we can just save a couple of lives by getting that up and running and, and saving those minutes, what's that worth to those families, you know?
I'll give you a quick example. My father almost died in my hands one night. He had an aneurysm and it went down his shirt, down his leg. He lost his leg, but there was a blood clot there. We didn't know if we were ever going to see him again. They took him out of Norwood. They brought him to the Norwood Hospital. They stabilized him. They were going to use Med Flight to fly him into Boston, but there was thunderstorms that night. And the ambulance took him by ambulance, 3:00 in the morning to bring him in women's. They went on to surgery right away, 7:00. I didn't know if I was ever going to see my father again. We ended up seeing him, and Norwood Hospital stabilized him and made him better just to get in there. And that helps the surrounding towns as far as, we need a hospital to have stabilized people. If they got to go somewhere, some of the best hospitals in the world are downtown Boston. And this is a big help to have somebody there that can do it, you know?
You're right. You don't have, sometimes you don't have the minutes to get to the best hospitals. Somebody, somebody has to be able to step in and do the stabilization part.
And the paramedics around here are the best.
But to equip an emergency room and a couple hundred beds, et cetera, a guess would be a couple hundred million dollars, maybe more. But in the scope of things, we can do that.
Yeah.
Where there's a will, there's a way.
I, I get what you're saying. I believe in your mission and I wish you luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Like to see everybody and anybody.
I was born there a few years ago.
Well, we'd like to see thousands or more children born there too in the future.
Absolutely.
Anybody we can see the day of Norwood Day down there for this? Spread the word.
If we could leave a couple of signs. Our Selectman Mike Sad has been generous, generous, sorry, generous enough to put his phone number on there. And if anyone would like to speak at that get together, at the rally, we'd love to have it.
Yes.
The more, the merrier.
And thank you very much for taking our time.
Yep. Appreciate you giving us the update.
Good night.
Katie, can I give this to you?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Next, we have the common virtual license application for Chick-fil-A.
I did tell them 7:40, so we might want to.
Okay.
And the Zoom, but.
Why don't we go down to some of our.
Is Tom here for Be Hoppy? Is that a public hearing?
No, it's not a public hearing. They're also, they're actually walking in if you ever want to wait for them.
Is that Be Hoppy?
Um, yes, it's for Wormtown and the New England Theater are, there'll be some via Zoom and some in person.
Do I have to?
You can come in. We're running early, so you can.
You want to come right up?
Right up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're running early.
We don't want to waste your time.
Wow.
I know the other, your, rest of the team are coming via Zoom, so we might be, they're not here yet, but you guys are, so.
Can I approach you guys? I have some goodies for you.
Thank you.
Just say your name and introduce yourself.
I'm good.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
You guys so much.
Thank you.
Thank you guys so much. Vote for me.
Okay. John Mail, 41 Ames Street in Sharon, operating business at 23 Patriot Place, Foxborough.
Monica Saret, 69 Short Street in Middle Borough, Board Member of the Operating Business.
Why don't you give us an idea of what you're looking to do?
Absolutely. So this came together relatively quickly. I am the founder of New England Public Theater, founding the artistic director of New England Public Theater, which is a new theater company that is meant to serve kind of like the whole southern New England region, kind of operating on like the regional theater model. So you can think about places like the Mass Arts Center in Mansfield, the Company Theater in Norwell, places that are doing what I would consider like semi-professional work. We're really committed to bringing innovative, interesting, sort of thought-provoking pieces to the region. And luckily, we've received some really generous partnership with Patriot Place, and we are taking over what used to be the Showcase Live and Helix Esports. It's a venue, concert venue was, was its original purpose, next to the Showcase Cinema at 23 Patriot Place. Our first production is going to open on October 9th. It is a revamped version of Oklahoma, classic musical, and we are super, super, super excited. The reason we're here today is just to kind of, actually, we're supporting the other people, Wormtown Brewery, who's going to be seeking a series of one day liquor licenses to serve beer at our shows. So also, it's just nice to introduce ourselves to the community, you know, like, we, we want to serve, it's, it's, you know, I, I want to make it clear that we're not, it's not just a Foxborough thing, right? We're, you know, I'm from Sharon personally. We want to serve like all the surrounding communities. We're lucky. We have a great venue, good sized venue, and we have some really great support from the people of Patriot Place. And, you know, really excited to get going. We've been rehearsing for a little while and everything's looking great.
So is this something you would continually do at the Patriot Place, or would you move around to other communities as well?
As long as they'll have me, it's something that we'd like to do. Oh, I should also mention, we are registered nonprofit, like the whole, yeah. Like, we're, we're the real deal. Yeah.
How many seats or how many people in the crowd will be there?
Um, we can sell up to like 185 to 200. That's kind of our max. It's a non-fixed seat venue, so it's not like a movie theater where you have like columns of, you know, fixed auditorium seats. The seats can be moved around, reconfigured however you want.
And this actually is an application by Wormtown, so we need them.
That is true. If it is helpful, I can let the board know. I did have a Zoom with Brian Early from Patriot Place, both these two, and a representative from Be Hoppy. And so they would operate exactly how they do, for example, at the Harvest Fest. That is a one day beer and wine license that Wormtown pulls for the event behind the Ask Pro Shops in the fall. So they do have 24 hours before the scheduled time of the event to bring in the alcohol, and they have 24 hours after the end of the event to have the alcohol leave the premise. I know that's something you probably want to hear from them, but that's just a little bit from our Zoom. And then I did connect with our fire department, health and building. They are doing a walkthrough just to make sure. I know fire, their fire alarms, they're, they've already been tested, but just, you know, Board of Health to go over just the prepackaged food. And then also, just Scott, just to go over like the occupancy and just mentioning the seat number and making sure that was in line.
Yeah, and I should also add that our work is not done yet. You know, like I said, like, this came together relatively quickly. We first got permission to use the space in late June, and all the other stuff, you know, like, you know, it's, it's coming along. Like, we're going to, and by the time we're ready to run, like, we're going to have all the Ts crossed and Is dotted. But yeah, definitely, like, we're not forgetting about any of that stuff. It's, it's on the list. Yeah. Oh, Brian also told me just to mention, if you want the exact show times, they're on in these flyers, but we're going to run, so that first weekend, 9 through 12, the 9th is 7:00 p.m., 10th is 7:00 p.m., 11th is 7:00 p.m., 12 is 2:00 p.m. And then 17th through 19th, it's 17th is 7:00 p.m., 18th is 7:00 p.m., 19th is 2:00 p.m.
Do you know if there's any Patriots games at home during those times?
It's been scheduled around. Nothing. Not even for our dress rehearsals. I did a good job. They're on the road.
You are good.
Pardon?
You are good.
I am good. There is a Revolution game on the 10th, but it's a 6 o'clock kickoff. So it's actually putting the show at 7:00. Like, the game will be going on when people get there and will be over when people leave. So I am good.
I also did check with the police, and Rich Noonan was, Deputy Chief Noonan was perfectly okay with that and happy to see that someone would be utilizing the space.
So Katie, when you talk about 24 hours before and after, October 9th, so they could bring it in on the 8th, can they keep it there then through the 12th and get it out by the 13th? Like.
Yes, definitely, because it's consecutive.
But then between the 12th and, or the 13th and say the 16th, they'd have to have it off-premise?
Yes.
And then back, okay.
Because I was going to ask the same question.
Sorry, Doc.
No, it's all good. Is there a secure area on those three or four days in a row?
There is because there's already, there was like a liquor locker and the former bar from Helix is what they're going to utilize.
Got you. Okay. Do they, does the performing side of it require any kind of permitting other than through the building inspector?
I, that's a good question. I can look into that one.
They might need an entertainment license.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
I have all the appropriate insurances and everything, so, you know, I don't think attaining the license would be particularly massive haul, but I'm happy to do whatever you, whatever is recommended.
Okay.
Hi, Jocelyn. How are you? Can you hear us?
Yes, good. Thank you.
Okay.
Hello.
How you doing? So we've gotten a little bit of a conversation as far as what the theater group is going to do here, and how, you know, Be Hoppy, you know, Wormtown, what the request is. But just kind of, if you can kind of walk us through your understanding of it so that we make sure we're all in agreement.
Um, we are, we will provide beer or malt beverages and wine. Darren's there. Hi, Darren. Darren is, will be the manager on premise. We are applying for the seven days during the times that the theater performances are. So that would be seven, probably a little earlier than that, 6:00 to 9:30 p.m. And the 2:00 to 4:30 p.m. slots on the two Sundays. We would be providing, it would be retail cans poured, a functional bar in the area, and wine, one red, one white.
And what about food as far as?
I'm handling food.
You're handling food on your side?
Yep. There's no, no cooking, just prepackaged concessions, you know, popcorn, candy bars, things like that. Yep, there's no cooking, just prepackaged concessions, you know, popcorn, candy bars, things like that.
Okay. Any questions by anybody on the board?
No.
No.
I think Katie's done a great job.
We had a lot of discussions, because we were running early, so we've had a lot of discussion before you guys got on. As far as, uh, is there anything else on your side that either one of you would like to add?
Not just we, we have the, obviously, all managers and servers have their tip certification, so they are familiar with, you know, the legal pouring of alcohol and over-serving, so just wanted to make sure you were aware of that.
Okay. And Darren, you'd be there the whole time as far as all, during these events?
Yes, yeah, I'll be the manager on duty, um, as well the general manager of the Patriot Place Tap Room. We haven't formally met, but yes, I will, I'll be there for all the events. I'll be managing all the onsite, um, as far as bringing everything to and from site as well. Yes, I will be there.
Okay.
And there'll be non-alcoholic beverages too, sodas and waters?
Sodas, waters, lemonades, whatever you'd like, because, you know, we're assuming you'll be there, so. Yes, put it in your request now.
Yeah, lemonade.
Yeah. Um, and I should also mention, this goes without saying, but, um, this is not gonna be like some rowdy, like, over-serve event. I mean, you know, it's closed-off musical theater. It's like people can get maybe one or two drinks before the show and one during intermission, so. You know, not to say like you don't have to do your due diligence, but, you know, what, I wouldn't be super worried about rowdy, you know, police riot breakups.
It's Oklahoma, come on. For the show of Oklahoma.
Yes, for Oklahoma, right, I would hope.
Gets rowdy, I hear.
Especially when that song Oklahoma starts.
Oh, yeah, it's, no, you gotta, gotta have the SWAT team come in, it's definitely, it's big time.
Do you have any?
I don't, nope, good luck.
Amy?
No, I'm really excited that there's a new theater option coming to town. I mean, we're very fortunate to have the Orpheum, but to have another one coming in, love it.
Absolutely, and we're really thankful for all your guys' support. Thank you guys so much. Anything that you guys can do to, you know, help promote and let people know we're here, we'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Awesome.
Motion?
Yep.
Motion to approve the B-Hoppy LLC doing business as Wormtown Brewery one-day beer and wine application to provide beer and wine service during the New England Theater performances held at 23 Patriot Place on October 9th, 10th, 11th, 12th, 17th, 18th, and 19th in 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, hearing none, congratulations.
Break a leg.
Thanks, guys.
Just a quick promo, uh, how do you get tickets?
Oh, thank you guys so much.
That was me.
No, Mr., Mr. Elfman.
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Elfman. Well, and anyone watching online, or wherever, um, you can get tickets at www-anypublictheater.org, and that's theater with an R-E. You can also look for a recent post in some of the Foxborough Community Facebook groups, and I will leave a flyer in Town Hall.
Awesome.
Thank you, guys.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys, appreciate you joining us.
Thanks, Darren, thanks, guys.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, nice to meet everyone. You also.
Good night. Are we expecting Chick-fil-A to come in?
Um, we...
Let's do some action, I'll...
Can't you handle it? You can probably do them too, can't you?
Yeah, I can probably do them too, if you're comfortable with it. Chick-fil-A, let me just come back up.
I drove by today, they have all their signage and stuff.
Nope, they did say, um, fall 2025, but they like to over...
Under promise.
Yeah, under promise and over-deliver, right? So the date has yet to be determined, but it's just a common vicular license. Um, you know, they'll have like the double drive-through, um, they, their leases with Patriot Place, not open on Sundays. It's kind of just there, it's another location that they're just kind of putting in their current operations that they have elsewhere and welcoming, welcoming them to town.
All right, may I just make the motion?
All right, motion to approve a common vic... I never say this right, vicular. Application for Chick-fil-A located at 1 Patriot Place.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Good luck.
Hearing none, yep, good luck to them.
Thank you.
My daughter's certainly excited about it.
That's a nice option to have.
Yeah.
All right, collective bargaining agreement. Also vote, collective bargaining agreement on the Foxborough Police Department. Keith, you want to come up? Mike?
Do you want me to kick it off? So I'll just start it, um, unless, Mike, you really want to do it?
No, so you please.
We met during executive session and went over, uh, the fact that we did settle, uh, reached a memorandum of understanding with the police union, and it was ratified by the police union on Friday afternoon. So with it, I can't recall, do we go through all the highlights, or do we, is this a general?
The general concept, so, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, that, it's a three-year contract, offering a cost of living adjustment, 3%, 2.5% and 2.5%, which is consistent with the other unions settled, does include a post-adjustment. Um, we did look at a senior, a 10-year senior staff, looked at things like night shift differential, longevity, some weekend coverage for detectives, and the police chief was able to incorporate some changes to split shifts, promotions, and, um, with the town, the union, the uniform and cleaning allowances, so. And the chief also has discretion on educational incentives. So that is pretty much the 30,000-foot highlight of the union, and we're very thankful to the union for working with us and for Mike Mullin and Chief Grace to work with us through this long process.
And this is the final contract?
This is the final, this, yes, seven out of seven.
Great. Motion?
Motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement for the Foxborough Police Department Local 379. M-C-O-P-A-F-L dash C-I-O.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? You got off Chief of the...
Good job. It was a team effort all around.
Yeah, it sounds like it was.
And our finance team was a huge part of it as well. We can't, they're not here right now, but they, they, their contributions could not be underestimated. They protected the, uh, the best interest of the taxpayers ardently.
Great, thank you very much.
I think everybody's relieved that's, oh, the contract's settled.
Discussion on a special town meeting, articles?
Yes, so, um, as we've discussed, or I don't even know if we've discussed it with you, but we have decided on a special town meeting to be held on October 27th at 7:00 p.m. at the high school. Uh, we worked through, as we always do, with the town clerk and the moderator and to come up with the dates, so it is scheduled for that evening. Um, we're asking that the board open the warrant tonight, and then the warrant will close, um, on September 2nd, so it's open for two weeks. In that time, all the placeholders have to be in, um, but the actual language of the warrant articles is not due until September 23rd. But basically, anybody who's trying to get an article in needs to get a placeholder into Katie by September 2nd. Uh, we do have quite a few already, um, let me see, do I have a list here? I don't want to show off that my computer's actually working, but...
You guys have, you should have a list.
Yeah.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I don't even have the list.
Sorry, can I steal one for the town manager?
It's okay.
Usually a pretty one.
Yes, tonight.
No.
Got it?
Yes.
Wow, there's a lot.
I don't have it. Yes, so it'll be an exciting town meeting. For those watching at home, you're not gonna want to miss it. We have some financial matters already on the agenda, some customary ones, the police contract will be on there. We have to reappropriate some funds for the PFAS plant, uh, there's some disposition of land, and we're actually gonna talk, there's three properties that we could be looking at, although I'm looking, after this conversation, I'd like to talk about holding off on one of them, 15 Willow Street, to retain for open space, but I'll explain that. Sewer map amendment, um, one suggestion I have, and I'm on the fence about this, I was just speaking to Bob Cutler about it, but as dissolving the Foxborough Affordable Housing Trust. And the reason for that is, is that was created when we received funds through, um, a sort of a buy-down of affordable units over at Chestnut Green during the, um, 2008 period in order to keep the project viable. The planning board had required affordable units. Uh, the developer wasn't able to really make the project work with those affordable units, so he actually paid the town $320,000. It was placed in an affordable housing trust. Uh, we held on to that for years, and we had this committee. We have used that for the Walnut Street housing project, so now there are no more funds. So, given that we don't have CPA and we really don't have any funding mechanism, my idea was sort of to, uh, get rid of the Foxborough Affordable Housing Trust, as much as it does sort of pain me. But that said, I think we could always reactivate it and reestablish it if we've come into money, but for right now, it'd just be another organization that has no charge and no means, so, I thought, from an efficiency point of view. But I am open to discussing that one. Katie's project of cleaning up appointed officials, that has to do with, you've mentioned, which position is that, is, um, the certain names, like the police, no?
Right, so like our veterans, um, veteran service officer, moving that to three years, and then there were a few positions that we could just make indefinite, um, so it's just changing like that one section. It's like letter B in that.
Yes, letter B cleanup. There are some bylaw revisions, um, for the accessory dwelling unit. If you recall, we adopted our bylaw before the state came out with their standards, so we have to tweak a few things on that. Catherine and the GIS Department have been working on a townwide zoning base map, and my understanding of that is, um, right now, if you look at our zoning map, it's just, uh, it's a pretty picture, but it doesn't show parcels. So they're trying to translate the map to a parcel-based map. So the first thing would be to adopt it, and then, um, if you look at number 19, it's to clean up. If there's certain zone, we want to adopt it as written, because that's the way it's understood, but then they will identify certain parcels that might be split and seek town approval to clean up some of those. So it would be kind of adopting as it exists today and then identifying any, um, conflicts or anything that don't make sense, and then the town could vote on that. So that'd be actually three articles, all sort of achieving the same thing, but making sure we break it down. And then, um, the opioid, that has to do with, um, what is, is that the new funding? I'm trying to remember what the opioid even, what is it even is, I can't even remember right now, I should know that.
Does it have to do with the funding that came in, how it's being spent?
It could be, or is it, yeah, I will, I'll TBD on that one. We did get an additional $102,000 from, um, the opioid fund payout settlement, so that probably is somehow transferring that money so that we can use it, because right now it comes into the general fund, I think, and I know we have to allocate it. So that's probably what it is, but I want to verify that. So right now, we have 21 articles. We had been much higher, so this is actually reduced, but, um, we, you know, we, it does look like a vigorous night of discussion, and hopefully lots of people will turn up to discuss it. So I would ask that you open the warrant for two weeks.
Sure. Okay, motion to approve the opening of the special town meeting warrant set for October 27th, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. at the Foxborough High School.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none? 15 Willow Street.
Yes, so, um, 15 Willow Street was taken back, uh, on January 23rd, 2023, and actually, the Conservation Commission thought that the town had already decided to keep it, but when, I wasn't aware of that, um, but they did go through an exercise of, um, evaluating it. It's, it's, um, located in an area of critical environmental concern, which is actually a technical term. It's, uh, I think it's got Zone 2 lands for wells, it's got a river running through it, so there are a lot of habitat. Barney over it did do a zoning analysis a bunch of years on it, and there might be a chance to squeeze a house lot in there, but it would be very compromised and possibly require, um, relief from the Conservation Commission. So we did receive last week a formal request from the Conservation Commission that the town retain this due to its sensitive environmental nature, and I outlined that in a letter that you have attached. I did also check with the council on this, because, as you know, the laws on tax title have changed, but at the time of this taking, this lot actually doesn't fall within the new regulations. So I did clarify that the board doesn't need to do anything to keep it. Um, what you would need to do if you wanted to sell it is just put it on town meeting warrant, uh, the town meeting warrant, but otherwise, you could just sort of take the action to vote to keep it, and we don't have to go through any additional steps, uh, tax-taking-wise to make that happen.
Okay.
So I'm glad to entertain questions if you have anything on...
I have two quick questions. One is, I think I asked you this the other day, so I don't know if you've been able to get an answer. Is this continuous with any other?
I don't have that message yet.
Okay. I think that's one thing, but also, do you know the size of this lot?
Hmm, I should know that. You can look it up very quickly, um, I don't know.
Obviously, if it can hold a house, it's, it's...
It's over an acre, so.
Yeah, okay.
Actually, I might have it.
I mean, I think the town is...
I totally have that here. Forgot my file.
I mean, I think the town has, I mean, we've done this in, over the last 20 years that I've been on boards and stuff, where we had pieces of property, and I sat on the, um, town land use board for a while, that was anywhere near any of our conservation land or water resource lands. We've always taken the tack to basically protect, uh, the water resources especially. So, um, I know some people might be concerned that we have too much conservation land or not enough conservation land, it can go either way. But again, I think if it has anything to do with water resources, we really need to take a, a good look at it and make a determination from there, so. Paige is looking up the, uh, parcel.
I know, in all my records, I don't think I have that written down anywhere, but let's see. It's listed as its owners already. It is... 1.67 acres. Let me just see what this, um, if this land is town of Foxborough. Yes, it is adjacent to town of Foxborough Conservation Land.
Okay.
Yep.
And it's, well, it's near one of our wells in that area?
I don't know which well it is, it could be a current well or a future well, Zone 2 can be for both.
Okay.
But it definitely is listed as a Zone 2.
Okay. I don't know how the board feels, I mean, I would be in favor of preserving it and not putting it in the town warrant.
Yeah, I agree.
It's a sale.
Throw it out there.
Yep. All right, um, an appellate motion, I guess?
Okay, motion to retain 15 Willow Street as town property as recommended by the Conservation Committee.
There you go, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none? I mean, it could always come up, you know, but I think at this point, I think it makes the most sense, so.
Certainly constrained and, uh, probably one of the ones that's almost a no-brainer, that it makes sense to hold on to.
Great.
Town common sign discussion, should be fun. We've had a couple of conversations in the past relative to whether or not we bring forward a meeting article to, um, the town relative to putting an electronic sign or message boards on the two ends of the common within the existing signage, um, footprint. And I know we all have different opinions on that, so I think it's a good time to have a conversation and see if we do put it out there, at least for, um, the town to make a decision one way or the other on it. So, go ahead.
I'll start, um, well, first question is, since the last time we had discussions, and I'm not on Facebook, did we get trashed again, discussing it, do you remember?
No, I didn't see anything.
No, I didn't see anything.
We did it one time, but, all right.
Well, I think you were very clear last time that this would be a decision of the people. This last one was very clear that it wasn't a matter, the first time it was brought up, it wasn't clear that it was a town meeting vote. I think the fact that...
People were, they, they, basically, they were saying, the board of selectmen shouldn't be making that decision, so.
Okay. We made it clear that we're not.
Things got geared up a little bit.
Gotcha, okay. Uh, my, my, my thought is, we could do it very tastefully, um, even to the same basic concept of what's up there now. It's just the ability to be able to change it as quickly as possible when we need to. It could be a white background, it could be black letters, just like, like the lion's sign is now. But, so, I would be in favor of getting it on the town warrant, so we could discuss that with the townsfolk.
Absolutely, pretty, pretty much ditto. I mean, I, 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 myself personally, would lean towards if we could do it tastefully. Pretty much, I think that's what you were kind of saying too.
Same as the lions is now.
But again, if it goes to town meeting and the people say no, the people have said no. So I don't feel that, you know, I don't, I don't think this is going to be a fight on whether we're going to have this or not have this. I think it's going to be pretty clear. It'll be a warrant article and we'll have that opportunity to bring information. And, you know, if people want to send their thoughts or.
Town to town meeting.
I was just kind of.
Town to town meeting. Exactly, like, it's not here because we could sit here for eight hours having a discussion voted here.
And we don't have anything to do.
We can't make that decision.
Right.
So.
Awesome.
Amy?
Well, everybody knows how I feel about it, but that's just me. I'm not here to speak for myself. We're here for everybody. So I think it should be on the town warrant. However, I do have a question. Where does the money come from? Because if I recall, when this came up back in, was it 2018 or ish, back before COVID, was that the Lions were pitching in like 50% of the cost and that they were asking us to pay for like 20,000 or 30,000. And now, I'm sure that's probably doubled. So where, where does that money come from? Somebody did ask me, so I was just curious.
So the money could come from a number of places. It could be, you know, it could be through donations, it could be through a supportive group. It could be through the town itself. I mean, all the ones that have been done by the school were done through CIP or, actually, I take that back. The Hearn and the IGO was half-funded by the PTOs and half-funded by the school budget. So, and the high school actually was funded through a, I think the building revolving account at that point in time, if I remember correctly. So I think there's a number of ways that it can be funded. And the question will be, if approved, you know, then the next step would be to get the funding for it.
Right, so this is just for the zoning?
This is just allowing the actual, whether or not town agrees. Obviously Barney's already worked on some wording that would have to be done on the zoning because this currently, as is, just like the Rodman Center had to come to us because they were within that same zone.
Sure.
They technically couldn't have that sign unless they were granted permission. Same type of thing, although he's, I think, looking at changing the zoning bylaw wording to allow this, allow the sign.
Yeah, this wouldn't be a variance.
These signs typically are, the last one that was done.
But there's two of them.
Was done at the IGO. And it's a double-sided sign. And it's, so now you have two single-sided signs, okay? And effectively, each side is a separate unit. So that was about $23,000, I think, to do the IGO. So you're probably in the 25-plus thousand range, maybe 30,000, to have two one-sided signs placed on each end. Obviously, they don't want to be two-sided because you can't see anything on the backside unless you're on the common. So, but yeah, I think the, you know, I think the first part is to get whether or not the town will agree to do it. And then, obviously, we can, we can push for funding in different ways and see who's willing to step forward to fund it.
Could we, just thinking about off of what you just said, Bill, could we get some ideas on what it would look like? Because I think, I think that, I mean, there are going to be some people that are just going to flat out say, no, I don't want it. Yes, I do want it. But I, I think for us to really give people an idea of possibly what it would look like. So it's, so it's not like, God, you know, I mean.
Yeah, no, 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 I think.
I've heard all kinds of, yeah.
I think we've all said and agreed that we would like it to be within the existing pillars of what's there, which happens to work well. That's the same thing that was done at the high school. The pillars existed, the signage was made to go in between the pillars that existed that had the Foxborough High School sign on it. And I think we all agree that that's what our preference would be, to keep kind of the character of the common. I did go out and measure it because Barney had asked me, and I think I said it was 39 inches tall, seven and a half feet long, which is more than, you know, you just basically go to the sign companies and you say, this is our media platform that they can, they can't exceed. And then they, they will design it within that footprint. And so it would sit there with still the Foxborough portion above it. And so just literally, as Doc said, it would be a switch out of the box that's there to a box that's an electronic box. It wouldn't really, if it was shut off, it wouldn't look any different than what you basically see today.
But Bill, do you think we could get in touch with the vendor who did one of these and ask them to give us an image or a mock-up? So that, I think that might go a long way to bring to town meeting, to show exactly what it could look like and to make sure that we're right. Because you had mentioned, or someone mentioned, it would be light background with dark text. Barney presently has it as dark with light, so we probably want to make sure we know whatever way we want.
That's your preference, you, whatever way you set, so any one of these signs, you can flip.
Okay.
So you could flip it so that the lettering sticks out, or you could flip it so that the background is what sticks out and the lettering is in it. Color, they're all controlled. Now, to be honest with you, if the determination is it's only going to be black and white, that's actually cheaper in a design cost than it is if you have the, you know, 200 and some odd thousand, you know, thousands of colors that you can have within a sign. So if we make it and say that it's only going to be black and white, I would say that we ought to be careful on that because in a time of emergency, you would want something that might be more eye-catching just for those. So that, again, could be a policy of the board as to how it's done. But that maybe there is for like a flashing red type of thing if something was really, that you really needed someone to know, not, you know, it's a special day tomorrow, but, you know, we've got a storm that's, you know.
Right.
Bill, you just mentioned, what I was going to question about is that policies, you know, whether it's white or dark, whether, what size of the letters, will the graphics be allowed? Are those policies that are set by this board? And at what point would they be set?
I think it would have to be in the zoning itself probably, right?
You can go either way, like.
How was the Rodman one done? Was that done through any control on it? Because they have a little bit of everything, they do have.
I would have to look at their permit. I mean, there was a variance, so I imagine that the zoning boards stipulated to some degree, but obviously not to such a degree that they can't have.
Because they have pictures. I've done graduating seniors on the board, so they obviously had that kind of graphics available.
Right, but always black and white?
No.
There's been colors up there?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
All right.
It's right across from me, come on, take a look.
I see it every day.
It's one of those things, you don't even pay attention because it's right there.
But whenever I walk by it, I read it.
In addition to those questions, I truly believe it belongs before the citizens at town meeting. So putting it on the warrant makes perfect sense to me.
Again, I don't think any of us disagree with that. I think that's the, that's really the driving force here is, and if everybody said no at town meeting or already say no, then well, that's, that's life, but at least we tried as far as putting out.
An option.
Right.
I don't remember which, it might have been you, Deb, that said it could be a heck of a lot more tasteful than the signs that are.
It was me.
Was it you?
The portable message board.
Right. Which is right, as you're entering the, entering the common, boom, you know. But I guess those are there just for short periods of time too, to be, to be honest. And, but that's what it made me think about when people were saying about that it would look hideous. And I'm like, oh, it couldn't look any more hideous than those, those big contraptions.
Just to clarify, and this is just a draft, Barney was kind enough to throw something down for us, but it's, right now, it says, "The message board portion of any such sign shall not exceed 38 inches in height by 90 inches in width, have a dark background with lettering to be of contrasting color, to be used solely for the purpose of providing public service information and provide static displays that last at least 10 seconds in duration. No such sign shall have flashing, intermittent or moving lights, animation, moving video or scrolling of display or changes of illumination intensity during a static display." So this is something that could be worked on. You know, we might want to change whether it's a dark background to a light background. I don't know if we want to get into the size of text because we'd probably need an expert to know that. We wouldn't know what.
Right, because it's generally done based on the distance of the cars that are coming at it. So like if you're coming from a side thing and you're going to be 100 feet away, then the letters have to be a certain size as compared to if you're literally 10 feet away, just like a TV in your house. It depends on how far away you are type of thing, so.
So I have some notes here where I think we would want to make sure that we add that it stays, you know, it's within the pillars that exist today.
Yep, I agree.
And I may look at changing from dark background to a white with dark lettering. So I think there's some tweaks to be done with this, but I think it's a great start. And, you know, certainly we'll get public comment going and maybe it'll get folks to come to town meeting.
And quite honestly, maybe some of the discussion on town meeting will change some of the wording requirements and how it's, to your point, how it's actually adopted, so. So it sounds like we're in favor of having this to be an article?
Yep.
Do we need to have a vote on it?
We were thinking, we don't think you do because you're going to vote on the warrant at the end. I think we just will continue on.
Under selection.
Yeah. And then when you come to the end, when you're settling the warrant, establishing it, I think you do end up voting on, so I think at that time is when you do it. But we'll continue to work and I, we'll work with Barney a little bit to just make sure we're following through with some of the things that have been said here, that that bylaw reflects it.
And I do think you should have, I mean, I think, I think the black, black and white is fine. I don't think having to have colors. I really have a hard time understanding why we might have to have any kind of graphics to it. But it's always nice sometimes to have graphics, even if it's black and white. But the, I do think you should have the ability to have an emergency type coloring, just in case. Just because I think that's, you know, yes, we want broadcasting. Which, general thing, but if there was really something that you're coming into town and we're having an issue with.
And that's kind of, kind of why we originally talked about it, how quickly to get a message there. So, so in any type of emergency, that would be exactly why we have it.
Yeah. Okay, good. All right, thank you, everyone. Donations.
Yes, so this came up, we had a meeting with Marie, our finance director, and Katie. If you notice on the back of your agenda action items, you're always voting on these smaller amounts of $150 and whatnot. So Marie, I don't know if it came from Marie or from you, but the suggestion was to increase the threshold by which I can approve donations versus the select board. And I think when we spoke to Bill, we came up with, what, $500? So that any donation under $500 I could just sign for and Katie can deposit it immediately. But anything 500 and more would come to the board and be placed on the agenda. But that is open to discussion. We left it blank. Currently, the threshold is 100, and so that's why you're seeing so many come through you.
So I guess the only, after, after our discussion, one thing I thought about is that, so if it's, right now, if it's under 100, we don't see it, we don't know anything about it. And, that doesn't bother me, it bothers me so much. But I didn't know, is there any place that donations in general are.
Reported.
Reported or listed? So like all those 50 or $75 ones or something that no one sees, are they, there's got to be someplace that that's accounted.
We're keeping a log. Yeah, we're keeping a log of every single donation. So like $22 where Paige is signing off, or $150 that you are approving, we have a log and we've started that as of July 1st.
And is that log going to be on the town website or accessible to people?
It could be. And I could like say you could update, it wouldn't be like, we'd have so many donations, like it could be updated, say, quarterly, if you like.
I don't know if it's important, I mean, I.
I actually was thinking the same thing, to be honest with you, because I, I kind of like seeing where the money's going and how we're getting it in and, I don't know, just having. I thought the same thing, I was thinking, some people wait for the recognition.
Yeah. Well, the only thing, and I know we don't do it currently, and I don't mean to put this on Katie, but it's like, it seems to me that we should recognize, you know, it's hard to recognize $22 ones and send letters out for that, you spend more money recognizing it, you know, with the person's time and stuff like that, but.
You could put it at the end of like the agenda, like where I put like meeting documents, say.
Have the list.
Yeah, like so you don't have to verbalize it, but it would be there.
Yeah.
And then it could be, I mean, that would just be as simple as, you know, dropping my table into community. And it could be every single donation, you know, because I have like the date, the amount, who, or if it was anonymous, like just NA or anonymous. And then the department or committee or commission it was going to, then the amount.
I think that's a great idea.
I think that'd be fine, I think that would be a good way to.
There's recognition twice, one at the end of our agenda and one on a website, yeah.
Yeah. Do you know, when I, when I first came on the board and I was clerk, somebody told me to make sure that, and I think somewhere around there, I think that was right around where, because we were reading a lot, I think, and then, and then we, Bill had, I think we voted on that Bill would okay some, you know, a certain dollar amount. But I just remember in somewhere, I got lost in the shuffle, probably clerk should have passed down to other clerks. Somebody must have passed it down to me to, like as we read them, to say, in with each one, with gratitude. Because I think people like that, you know, I mean, I guess we're all grateful, we know we are, but I just got into a habit of, you know, saying it. And maybe whoever was behind me, maybe I didn't pass it down. I just, that was one thing. I think, I think Deb hit it on the head. Some people just, they're not donating for the recognition, but it is kind of nice if you've done something nice that people know, to be recognized, yeah.
So the question is, do we want to go from 100 to 500? Do we want to go from 100 to 250? Or do we want to go to some other number? A lot, if not most of the stuff we get is 250 or under. The majority of it. There's only a few big ones that really usually come in. Most of them are like the police thing, which I think.
What is the number right now?
100.
100.
100, yeah. Just my opinion, if they're going to be recognized, I would say 500 is good. But I like the idea of recognition somewhere in print.
Well, plus that people know they're out there. So if they're, you know, if any one of us had a question, we'd be able to question it at the meeting too, so.
I think I kind of like 250, but I could go with a 500. I just, I don't know, I mean, it all depends on where the money is coming from. Like $250 is a lot of, a lot of money for some people, so. But I could, whatever the rest of the board, I, I'm not locked into that.
I could have been comfortable staying at 100, understanding the labor it puts on both of you to do that, but I could rise to 250, if that was the board consensus.
Amy, thoughts?
I could go either way, so 250, I think, is probably good if I had to pick.
Okay.
All right, I'll drop down to 250.
And then do you want it on the agenda and on the website, or is it just on the agenda?
I think just on the agenda is fine, because anybody, because anybody can get it from the website because they're looking at our agenda.
Yeah.
So, yeah. Why, too much, huh?
Too much. Do we need to make a motion?
Yep.
Yes.
Motion to approve the donation acceptance amount for the town manager approval raised to $250.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post, hearing none? Thank you, town manager's up to you.
Okay, I wish the chief was still here. But just so you know, I don't believe it's official yet, but I did get word after, I mean, I met with them, but the police have been, will be re-accredited. They went through, I went over there one day and the amount of work and the level of professionalism that that, the accreditation team and then the whole police department team led by Richard Noonan was impressive. So my understanding is they had zero required changes to their policies or compliant documentation, so A-plus effort. The assessors were highly impressed with all the written directives and the day-to-day implementation. And final approval is expected by the end of September. So we're not surprised, but always impressed. You know, knowing that group over there and knowing Rich and just how seriously they take it, it was very impressive to see and I'm thrilled that they got the, they will be getting the recognition they deserve. Speaking of recognition, just as an aside, our town council, Jay Tallerman from Mead Tallerman and Costa, was awarded the 2025 Robert W. Ritchie Special Achievement Award by the Mass Municipal Lawyers Association. So I guess we picked a good one. He's being recognized by his peers. Paula Hearn from Schneider Electric reached out to ask me to pass along his appreciation to the town, particularly DPW, Police and Fire, during the demolition exercises they went through. They had 75,000 hours of work into the demolition and zero injuries. And they couldn't thank the town and, you know, those three departments enough for just their willingness to work with them from water lines being cut off and just road rerouting. road rerouting, it really was impressive coordination. They are finishing up their final details and are probably just about done. So now we're getting into talking about what's next. Walnut Knoll, the traffic signals should be operational by September 1st, maybe even next week, but I don't want to promise anything. They also were awarded a 2025 Affordable House Development Grant Award. So what that means is Phase Two has been funded, which is fabulous. We were all very worried, so that's the final building out there, so they can continue on and complete that project. As you know, things have been a little dicey and we weren't sure whether there'd be the funding available, but they were able to get that approved. And our housing trust money did help, because one of the things they look at is for local contribution to make sure that the community's buying in. And so our housing trust fund showed the state and the feds that this is something that we took seriously, so hats off to everybody. But it's funded through federal and state low-income house tax credits, subsidy sources like Home and the National Housing Trust, state bonds, the list, it's so complicated. And I know I've seen complaints about the paperwork, I've mentioned it previously, the amount of paperwork and some of the effort that's going into being able to move into there. And all I can say is that Walnut Knoll doesn't dictate this. This is, one thing we've learned through our federal grants is that the paperwork is incredible. Bill, you probably saw it on the school side. So they have to go through this exhaustive effort and collect all this information, sadly, because there's so many tax credits and funding and subsidies involved. So it's, it's hard and we recognize that, but I, I know it's, it's something they have to do to dot their i's and cross their t's. Something that's come up within the past month or two has been the World Cup and with respect to short-term rentals, that's Airbnbs and VRBOs. We did talk internally about this and at this time, right now, short-term rentals are not permitted in Foxborough, the zoning doesn't allow it. And there was no, no initiative to go ahead and allow those. So at this time, just going on the record to say they're not allowed, that's not to say that some people don't do it, but just so folks know, it is not permitted. We, we don't actively enforce it because we don't have, we haven't really had a problem with it and we don't really have the, the staff to constantly be vigilant about that. We don't know what's going to happen with the World Cup, but we didn't want to sort of overreact and address a problem that we're not currently having. But I just wanted to go on the record that short-term rentals, if you're a rule follower, are not allowed in Foxborough. Upcoming land use workshops, I've mentioned previously, we were not getting good attendance and good engagement on this and, except for, I guess the surveys are going well. So again, would encourage folks to get involved on August 26th, so that's next week, at 3:45 at the Community Center, there'll be a discussion of senior housing needs. And then on September 9th, there's going to, at 7:00 PM at the Community Center, there'll be a discussion of the future Foxborough from economic development to conservation to national resources. So again, that's August 26th at 3:45 and September 9th at 7:00 PM. And there are multiple surveys up, so if you go to planfoxborough.com, you can, if you haven't filled out the surveys, please do so. We did have a meeting on July 29th and there were just a handful of people there, so if you can get involved, it's not too late, please do. We, with respect to grants, Matt Brennan in the Board of Health, he's our health director, he received a workplace safety grant. So we're going to get sufficient funds to cover two classes worth, which is, so 24 individuals, 12 in each class, to attend in-control driving training, which is great because Katie handles our fleet and she can attest to the fact that sometimes there's a few fender benders, so we have some training opportunities. I was able to take that class for free, because if I went, then two or three other staff members were allowed to go. And I got to say, it was, I learned a lot. I mean, I've been driving way too many years, I got my license, I think, in 1984. So I've been driving for quite some time, but I learned some things and it was fun. It was really fun, to be able to drive 60 miles an hour and have to brake, where else can you do it? It takes place on the old runway down in the Weymouth Naval Base. And so anyway, you'll see, some of our staff members will have the opportunity to go and some of them need it, so we'll just leave it at that.
Is that done as a priority as far as certain departments like?
Unfortunately, Police and Fire are not eligible for this grant.
Okay.
So they can't go, but yes, we are looking at who we think needs to go. We do have a little list.
Council on Aging Driver.
So yes, we are looking to prioritize those that drive more as opposed to those that do not.
Yeah.
I will also say that the benefit for me, and it only depends on your insurance, but I saved $30 on my insurance last year because, and I didn't even know that, but I sent their certificate to them and I got a $30 discount, so can't go wrong there. Planning ahead, the Halloween parade is on October 25th. And Light Up Town is scheduled for November 29th, so mark your calendars, you don't want to be away and miss that. The Veterans Department, can't say enough about them, they have so many event plans. The POW MIA 24-hour candlelight vigil is going to be held from, on September 18th, from 11:00 AM till noon on September 19th. So you'll see folks out on the Common for 24 hours. As you know, Veterans Day is on November 11th, we're always invited to participate with that. They're having on, I think it's October 18th, from 9:00 to 1:00, a Veterans Resource Fair. And then, I already mentioned the POW, Veterans Breakfast is on Saturday, September 20th, from 9:00 to 12:30 at the Community Center. And then they're having an ice cream social for veterans on September 27th. So they have a lot of things. I also believe I heard at the department head meeting last week that they're working with the Sheriff's Department and they plan to visit every veteran in town to make sure they're aware of their opportunities and that they're getting the resources they need. So that, I mean, Michelle and Lauren, I mean, that is just tremendous outreach and a great effort, so we want to make sure no one's being missed. So we really appreciate that. Communications update, Marie Almodovar, our finance director, is going to hold two municipal finance 101 classes. Who doesn't want to go to that? It's a lunch and learn on September 23rd at 11:30 at the Community Center, and then there'll be an evening session, sorry, no dinner, on September 30th at 5:45. So we encourage residents to go to that. She's going to go over the sort of the basics of municipal finances. If you ever wondered why your taxes are going up, that's, helps you explain it, explain things like free cash and whatnot. So I think it'll be very helpful. The Common Brief was, that's our newsletter, was put out on August 4th, and then there'll be another full issue coming out in the first week of September. Stay tuned for that. Presently, under Human Resources, we have an apprentice mechanic position open, community substance use coordinator, and a tree and parks division laborer and driver. And then finally, for construction, on Walnut Street, the signalization, yes, oh, so all traffic lights should be running by Labor Day, as you know, they're on flash mode. The Chestnut Street PFAS plant is, completion is still slated for spring of 2026, it's under construction. The DPW building expansion, stormwater and paving construction is ongoing in the rear of the lot, and completion is still predicted to be by Christmas. And then we're still working on finalizing the Main Street sewer extension. And that's all I have. And again, I also did send out an email about the Foxborough 250. Some folks are saying they really do think there should be a committee. So if anybody's interested in taking that initiative and running with that, I sent it to a few victims out there, trying to see if they'd wanted to jump on it, Amy was one of them. But, so we are, that'd be something, they can run the gamut, you know, we had talked about maybe just having an enhanced Founder's Day, that that would be obviously the charge of the Founder's Day Committee, and maybe doing something special on Light Up Town and some banners. Others want to do more, and so I think that's up to the committee and to the residents, so if somebody has a passion on that, you know, let us know and maybe a committee could be formed, or alternatively, Founder's Day Committee wants to take it on. It's really up to the community. That's all I have.
Did everybody get the email about planting a tree?
No.
No?
No? I got, I thought, I got something about, maybe my name was, someone might have had me still from being chair or something, you didn't, you didn't see an email? It was, I thought it was kind of a cool idea. I know we've planted trees for other things and stuff before, so maybe it's not special, but it just, it talked something about four-year celebration of like planting a, a tree on the 250th birthday, so whoever ends up taking, taking the reins, I'll pass that, that'll be my, my suggestion, I'll pass that along.
So just an update, Paige, and you wouldn't have had this, was the, the schedule now on the DPW has moved up to December 8th. Partly because they've been making really good progress recently. Once they got the concrete floors in, it's basically been all trades are working again. So unfortunately, the original date was late October, so we're still not back to where we want to be, but I think the, the fact that things are moving a little bit faster now is, is kind of good.
Bill, when do you expect the buses to move over, back over?
To be honest with you, because the paving, the final paving won't be done still for quite a period of time, it probably won't be until late October anyway.
We have the, we have the permission to park over there through December 31st.
Okay, yeah.
We extended that, but I know everybody wants it back over there, so that makes sense. You have to get it in before the final paving closes, I guess.
Right, and the, the other thing that they're doing is, they still have some major work that needs to be done in the back and they can't do that until they take out the temporary fuel line. So those, they're actually hoping to open up the, the new fuel pumps in, in the end of September and take, be able to then take out the temporary ones. We won't have the new system in place, but we'll run it the same way we're running the temporary, where people log in and do their thing. But at least that way, the new pump stations will be open and running and we can shut down and finish the, that's why the paving's going to take longer than, we have to get that up first. Overall, I think that project is, is going well, I think the contractor's done an excellent job on that, so. What else do we have? Does anybody else have any updates from as far as the board, things going on that you're?
I got the pickleball. I got the pickleball, went to the pickleball ribbon cutting. There was a lot of people there, a lot of people, and like I, I just, I just showed up and, and I was heading from there to, over to Trader Joe's anyhow, so, but they, like they were all dressed to play pickleball and I got to meet Jody and I got to meet a couple of the guys from Franklin Sports that, who are helping back her. I think it's going, I think it's going to be great. She's, she's energetic, she's, as she told me, she's an entrepreneur and she's very excited about her project, so I think, I think it's going to be successful. I did admit to her that I've never played, never been on court, and she says she's going to get me on, we'll see.
Should join my lessons.
You know, but, yeah. Yeah, I mean, you know, nice, nice addition up there. Obviously, I can't wait to see what the indoor, the indoor piece is going to be, but people were very excited, very excited and seemed like her staff, the people that I did, you know, even if I didn't meet them, just, you know, they were all talking and stuff, seems like it's going to be a very successful project up there, so.
If you remember when we opened up the pickleball courts up at Peas and Road, we, we all spoke a little bit up there and the pickleballers couldn't get us off fast enough so they could get on the darn new courts and stop playing. Yeah, it's huge, huge.
Well, anybody can do it, so. It's good support. Anything else for your side, Doc?
No, I'm good, thank you.
I went to the ribbon cutting for the new art gallery, and I think it was the weekend after our last meeting. What an energetic business owner, she is so excited to be in the center of town. And if you have a minute, I recommend just going in there, there's some interesting stuff in there. And then the Foxborough JC's Car Show is this weekend on Sunday and it's going to be a beautiful day.
Oh, great.
I'm all set.
Yep, you're all set. And I don't have anything else, so we are to donations and other actions.
Okay. Hold on, and more action items, sorry. Okay, motion to approve and sign the FY 26 to FY 28 Integrated Contract for United Steel Workers AFL-CIO-CLC Unit A, United Steel Workers AFL-CIO-CLC Unit B, the Boydin Library Employees Association MLSA, MFT, AFT, AFL-CIO, and the Foxborough Professional Firefighters Association Local 2252.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none?
Motion to approve the use of Public Way application for the Knights of Columbus Annual Tootsie Roll Drive on October 4th from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM on the corners of the town common.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none?
Motion to approve the extended alcohol service requested by Grand Slam Restaurant Group Doing Business as Jake and Joe's located at 25 Foxborough Boulevard to serve alcohol accompanied by their lunch menu starting at 11:00 AM on all Sundays in 2025, starting September 7th, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to accept the donation from Rowan Greens LLC in the amount of $9,850 to cover the cost to hire a cleanup crew to remove debris and rubbish from the adjacent conservation land of Butter 119 Moore Street, per the condition of the comprehensive permit.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Motion to accept the donation from the Mogala family in the amount of $150 for the youth police academy.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none?
Motion to accept the donation from the Freyer family in the amount of $130 for the Veteran Services Banner Project.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none?
Motion to accept the donation from the Dodge family in the amount of $130 for the Veteran Services Banner Project.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none?
Motion to accept the donation, sorry, in the amount of $600 to the Historical Commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none?
Motion to appoint the town election workers with a term of September 1st, 2025 to August 31st, 2026. And I have to read the names?
Yes, please.
I'm going to do my best. Nancy J. Allen, Christine Blankenship, Robert Bodie, Kathleen Brady, Margaret Brady, Raymond Burke, Stephen Berlone, Susan Berlone, Arlene Butler, Arthur Butler Jr., Pamela Butterworth, Deborah Byron, Margot Carlton, Madeline Champagne, David Coffey, Susan C. Collins, Karen J. Coombs, Jane S. Curtis, Joan K. DeLuca, Jean A. Dyer, Elena C. Engler, Thomas F. Earhardt, Elizabeth Jean Foster, Ellen McCarthy Garber, Joseph Garty, Jaclyn Gill, Bruce L. Gilpin, Patricia A. Gorm, Michael W. Gottke, Patricia A. Glover, John R. Gray Jr., Elizabeth A. Hall, Scott A. Hall, Glenda J. Haney, Janet F. Haynes, Charlotte Jones, Horace J. Jones Jr., Neil C. Kaiser, Michael Kaminsky, Shelby Cornbluth, Joseph P. Lally, James Lawless, William Lexner, Rosalie Lynn Scott, Janet Longren Spinney, Beverly Lord, Elizabeth Lines, Denise Malkalkum, Sophia Christine Monos, Paul Morrison, James R. Murphy, Barbara L. Newhook, Claudia O'Leary, Charles P. Omet, Jane E. Omet, Kristen Mian Papiano, Lisa Marie Pereira, William Person, Deborah Lynn Peterson, Carol A. Pignato, Kathleen Porter, Mark Powers, Mary L. Quinn, Eileen T. Rittger, John Rogan, Lucille Sabbin, Thomas P. Sabbin, Janet Sergeant Tracy, Deborah Scribner, Maureen Sergi, Patricia Shea, Bruce Storer, Douglas P. Seuss, Shannon De Seuss, James Tracy, Marcia L. Walker, Erin H. Walter, Raffaela Feinstein.
Good job. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I don't think I ever realized there was that video.
No. I printed up the agenda, it just kept going.
Okay, motion, now that I've talked so much.
Easy for you to say, huh?
Motion to appoint Diana Malkowski to the Foxborough Historical Commission for a term to end May 31st, 2028.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve select board meeting minutes for July 15th, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Everybody.